May we combine clarity of mind with kindness of heart and may we be impartial without bending to strong personalities. May we sacrifice self-interest for the good of the whole. May we do our work with love and clarity of vision for the benefit of those we represent.
Thank you.
I'd like to call the February 15th, 7:00 PM meeting to order. We're a couple of minutes late for technology, but we're here. Do we have any additional late items? We'd also like to wish the mayor a speedy recovery as he's home resting for a little bit. So, approval agenda 3.1, that council adopted February 15th, 2016 council meeting agenda as circulated. Any discussion? I'll call a question, all in favor? Number four, adoption of minutes, January 18th, 2016 council minutes. That council adopted January 18th, 2016 regular council minutes as presented. Have a motion? Any discussion? All in favor? 4.2, February 1st, 2016 Committee of the Whole minutes. That council adopted February 1st, 2016 Committee of the Whole minutes as presented. Have a motion? Secondary? Any discussion? All in favor? We have a couple of delegations and presentations, and I think Councillor Jackson is going to take over 5.1.
Thank you very much. For those of you who are, who watch our council meetings, there has been for about the last seven or eight years, somebody behind the scenes that you don't ever get to see because she's quietly doing the work of recording all of these so that you can see them later, which I believe is on Thursday. And she's now stepping down into a little bit of a retirement, and we've got a bit of a gift here for her. Her name is Margot Izzard, and she's a member of our community who's just been, who's given us great and wonderful service over the last eight years. So Margot, if you wouldn't mind coming up, I'd like to give you a little gift. I know you didn't want us to do this, but (laugh) thank you so very much for all of your work.
And would you like to tell people that this isn't just, this is live right now, and two days from now or so, for the next few years, you can look up any part of it you want online. You don't have to watch the whole meeting. You just click on the text you want, and you've got it.
Thank you so very much. Let's have a little round of applause.
Moving on to 5.2, thanks Sharon. Janet Doherty, Tourism Society, an overview of the society's governance model and marketing plan. And Janet, the floor is yours.
Okay, so, and we're okay for this? All right, you can hear me. So, thanks very much for seeing me tonight. Really, I'm here tonight to try and give you a little bit of information about what we've been doing with the Tourism Cowatchan Society, because there's actually a great deal of confusion over what the Tourism Cowatchan Society is, or more to the point, who it is. And that would make perfect sense, because we have the Tourism Cowatchan Society, we have Cowatchan tourism. And that even gets part of the EDC and the CVRD confused. So, for the last little while, just, I'm not going to spend a lot of time going into history, because that would take a long time, and I've actually been at this for about a decade now, trying to get the Tourism Cowatchan Society going with a number of other people. So we have really had very little or no control over the budget. We've had a little bit of an advisory role, and at one point Peter was there at the table with us, at his advisory position. But what our focus has been in the last little while is to actually change that power of control, convince the CVRD that it would be better run by stakeholders within the Cowatchan Valley, and that we report back with transparency and clarity to the CVRD. And then, of course, a great deal of time has been spent with actually trying to find the money so that we could get a marketing plan together and promote all of the Cowatchan Valley. There's very little one can do without any money, and volunteerism will only go so far. But on, just a small note on volunteerism, I actually really loved your, your talk just at the very beginning, and the, in the manner of all working together and putting things aside. I have so much respect for the people that have worked alongside me for the Tourism Cowatchan Society, because they're all, all volunteers, and they have been diligently putting in a huge amount of time writing reports, trying to get money, and trying to do things to promote the valley. So, even though they're not here with me tonight, I just wanted to, to mention that that there's an amazing group of people, as you probably already know, in the Cowatchan Valley, and putting in a huge amount of effort for this. Because I'm assuming that a lot of people don't necessarily have a tourism background or a marketing background, I'm just going to start off with a little piece that the Tourism Vancouver Island Board put together that really was to be focused on council and more government, to try and give you a little bit more insight as to what tourism can actually do for economics for all of Vancouver Island, but I think is quite, so it's rather short, so if you could just have a quick look at it, and then I'll talk to you about the governance model. I realize my time is only 10 minutes.
Tourism, it's going places. And it's taking places from Vancouver Island and the Sunshine Coast around the globe with it. Put your place on the map and energize the local economy by supporting tourism for all it's worth. And its worth is really quite staggering. Your constituents can relate. After all, so many of them were tourists first.
It got prettier every turn we took, and then we met the people. Even the teenagers were nice. It was just, wow, I could do business in a place like this.
Tourism is thoroughly Main Street, a real-world barometer of economic health. It injects new dollars into our economy, generates thousands of good-paying jobs, and attracts innovative investment. We raise more money for more essential services we might not afford otherwise. And it all helps attract and hold on to younger residents who love this island lifestyle, spreading and multiplying the wealth. That's especially good for rural communities with limited economic prospects, and it's pretty good come reelection time, too. Yes, tourism delivers a great ROI. But take support, the tools, skills, and funding to help industry stakeholders make good on our promise of an exceptional vacation experience. At the heart of it all, you'll need a great strategy, compelling, competitive, and clearly distinctive. The Canadian Tourism Commission and Destination British Columbia are working hard to achieve tourism's full potential. Tourism Vancouver Island and your community tourism organizations are right there, too. Government support for destination marketing is a 100% way to tap tourism benefits and ensures we spread the word effectively to attract savvy travelers. So show your support, invest in tourism.
Most of us come to an area, experience it, and from there, there's a desire to either stay, play, work, live. It builds upon it, so tourism is essential for the economic development of any region.
A good place to visit can be a very good place to live. So many residents, you know them as voters, were tourists first, and many are proud owners and operators of local businesses that depend on tourism. Yeah, tourism really does generate big dollars, and it starts by putting people to work, employing folks in hundreds of different jobs and careers, offering perks perfect for all kinds of lifestyles, from young workers and students to seniors and the families of workers moving in. And don't forget, tourism is quite the driver for resident workforce and investment traction. Economic development and tourism are just a natural together, working to grow your local economy.
It's a pretty vibrant and growing scene, and tourism is a huge part of the local economy. It's a huge multiplier effect. It's not just the salaries that they're paying in the tourism businesses, which are important, it's what the people are spending while they're here.
Tourism, we're all in. Tourism Vancouver Island and community tourism organizations are working to grow the many benefits of tourism, and you can too. Help make our destination a warm, welcoming, world-class attraction, and we can all be better together. Learn more about the value of tourism and why your investment is a smart way to grow a diverse and more prosperous future. Visit us at valueoftourism.ca.
I don't know if you recognize, but there was an awful lot of images in there from Cowatchan.
I recognize the mountains. Was that baldy?
I think so. There was also a lot of the, the people that were talking were from this area. We had the winery, we had brewery, and it just went on and on and on. But the main point of all that is, is we have a huge amount of tourism potential here in Cowatchan Valley, and it's just passing us by. And it's been passing us by for a very, very long time period. Basically, there's $120,000, which comes from the CVRD, and about 55% of that, 60% of that goes to actually administration, wages, leaving, you know, probably somewhere around $50,000 to market the whole of the valley, branding it, and getting out there beyond Vancouver Island. So our goal is, is to increase that pot. So that's really what we've been focused on, is, is creating that structure. Excellent news over the last little while where we've been trying, and I really mean this when I say it's been a decade, I think Peter can vouch for a good portion of that as well. We went ahead and moved on to Destinations BC where they had created a new funding model. And we, as volunteers, we put together a proposal asking them for some money, which we were going to leverage with the CVRD $120,000. So we put out an ask of $170,000. Oh, did I tell you guys when I first started, I'm not going to ask you for any money?
Yes, who said?
Oh, okay. So we started, we did the 100, I just think that's really important, because most of the time when you, people think they're going to get asked, there's a certain reserve until you get to the ask. So we're not asking you for anything, but we did end up getting awarded out of the, what we asked at 170,000, we got awarded $138,000. So we have that money coming to us effective April 1st, but it has to be leveraged on those 50, 50% dollars. So with that in hand, and with the other leveraging, we've got some other projects that we're undergoing. First step for us was to come up with a governance model. So I'm just going to start in on the PowerPoint, and it's a pretty quick one, but I'm going to get to the governance model so you can see what we're doing with Cowatchan and what we proposed to the CVRD. That's, I think you can just start there, that's fine. So we are the Tourism Cowatchan Society, we are not Cowatchan Tourism. And then I have control, right?
Yes.
Click down. Okay, so what, a little bit of background of why it's taken us so long to get here. So the main purpose of Tourism Cowatchan, to create a brand for Cowatchan, so that's all of Cowatchan. Remember, the tourist doesn't know anything about our regions, and we don't necessarily, we want to have them coming into each one of our regions, but they know no boundaries. What's really important is that we don't present boundaries for them. We want to pool scarce resources as individuals, as Duncan, as Mill Bay, as Cowatchan Bay. If we keep our funds separated and we're not doing some overall arching branding, then we're always going to have a small pool to play with. And in order to make a splash, in order to attract people, we have to have a large enough budget to actually get out there. So that doesn't mean that you give up marketing your own particular areas, but we need to work together on a larger brand, and then you work within that larger brand. So to reach those markets that we're really trying to, to hit, the individual resources with pooling, we're going to focus on the lower mainland in BC, Alberta, and Washington. And we want to leverage with our partners. So when I say partners, this is just assuming that all of us within the region in Cowatchan are working together. So our partners are those like Tourism Vancouver Island, which you just saw. They have a tremendous reach, so if we're, if we're partnering with them, we can make our dollar go that much farther. And tremendous reach with Tourism Victoria, which we're very, very close. I had a, what's called a familiarization tour today at my own business at Marydale. They were all talking about how quick it was to get over the Malahat. That, too, has taken a number of years, but we actually had the corporate office up, as well as some of the key visitor staff, and we had them touring all around the valley to, today. But what's really keen is that they've never given us this much notice before, so they're just ripe for us to be able to do that branding and to get down there and have them coming out their gateway. They're the busiest visitor center in all of BC, and they probably have the most money, And so what the other key component of this is leveraging funds with stakeholders. So if we have an organization that is run by stakeholders, then later when we're going out to things like the MRDT, which is a hotel tax, way more likely to have this instituted than ever if it stays with CVRD. It's been shown that when CVRD or government goes out to try to implement, to get that passed, it just doesn't happen. When stakeholders have control of it, it happens. So, important point. I kind of just went all through this right now. Increase options for funding, a consolidated marketing plan for the entire valley with the, or sorry, yes, entire valley with the unified brand. In order to undertake the work at hand, this is what we have proposed with the governance and management structure changes. So right now, what we currently have is seven members. We haven't gone out to voting yet, but there was no point until we actually had our structure and we had funding, and no membership required. So just backing up a little bit, what's actually happening right now with Tourism Cowatchan, when you see that magazine, that's, that's basically being done with the EDC, with the one contractor, which is Kathy Mailhot, and that's not being done by the Tourism Cowatchan Society. This is the proposed structure that has got preliminary approval, I believe, now with CVRD. So you can see the Board of Directors here. What's important here is we have a Board of Directors, but we have a Finance Committee, a Governance Committee, and a Marketing Committee. And these are over on the board side, they're all voting members. So what we are going to probably do at the beginning part is there will be no dues to become a member. Really what we're trying to do is just get all of the stakeholders engaged. So the Board's role will be to provide leadership, direction, establishing standards of the organizational conduct, overseeing and monitoring organizational performance, protecting the interest of the organization, ensuring the health and sustainability, and ensuring knowledge of stakeholders' expectations, needs, concerns, interests, and building effective relationships. So you can see how this flows down, the Cowatchan Valley Regional District, so they approve the plan and the fund. So at, at, we're always going back to the CVRD and having that budget approved of the $120,000. Then flowing down to the Tourism Cowatchan Society for the board that you saw before. So really, a lot of essential work is happening down here, the Governance Committee, the Marketing Committee, and the Finance Committee. And there's an opportunity for many, many, lots of different input on these levels, then it funnels back up to the Tourism Cowatchan Society. We will hire a coordinator. As you probably know, as I was saying before, volunteerism doesn't last forever. We want this to carry on, so you need to be able to have enough money in your pocket to make sure that you can hire a coordinator, and hire somebody with the, the expertise to do it. So with this proposed structure, the CVRD still maintains the control of funds. There's still, there's transparency. The transferring, planning, and execution of destination marketing, though, goes to the tourism marketers. As the CVRD has, excuse me, as the CVRD says, they are not tourism marketers. And it empowers Tourism Cowatchan to immediately implement incremental effective marketing initiatives, including the implementation of the MRDT. So as I was noting before, the MRDT is shown to be unsuccessful when a CVRD or government body goes out for it. But the really important point in here, too, is to be adaptive. Just like any business plan, you want to be able to be going back and forth and making sure that you're staying on top of what's actually going on in your tourism or your So I've just plunked this in before when I, we were showing this slide to the CVRD, it was $170,000 that we had applied for, we did get $138,500. When they did the approval of, with the DBC, sorry, I'm throwing around a lot of acronyms, tourism is full of acronyms. So it's Destinations BC, and with them changing their marketing plan, they took away some money from some of the DMOs, in this case from Tourism Vancouver Island, Tourism Vancouver, Tourism Kelowna. They had a set fund, what they went out to, and what we got was 80%, so that was a great deal higher than a lot of the other one, other proposals that had gone out there. In fact, the, sorry, Vancouver Island got ward, awarded most of the contracts out of the, all for Destination BC, so lots of great things are going to happen on Vancouver Island with tourism. Key objectives, to communicate the full breadth of Cowatchan's attractions. So as I said before, this is a regional piece, it's to include everybody, anybody to do with tourism. To increase revenue for the stakeholders, so we've really got our eye on the bottom line for stakeholders. We really want to encourage overnight stays. It's a bit of a chicken and an egg thing, because we are lacking in our accommodation in the Cowatchan Valley, but when we start increasing business, and it is starting to happen, there is a lot more interest right now in accommodations, in building. There's a lot more talk than there has been for years in hotels, et cetera. And that is a very important point for us to have growth in tourism. But having said that, we're not far from Victoria, which is nice for us. It does mean that we can still get a lot of traffic coming up from there, even if we don't have the beds to put them in. And to position Cowatchan as a major motivator to travel in BC. So we've been missing, as I said before, a great deal of traffic as it flows straight through from Victoria and going up Island, or in between Nanaimo and Victoria. The marketing plan itself, I'm not going to go into depth. Really what I'm trying to do today is to try and give you an idea of what we're doing with Cowatchan Tourism. This is a brief overview of what we're looking at. So brand refresh. You can see this Tourism Cowatchan that has been done actually quite a while ago by the Taiyagi Group, and I think they actually did a brilliant job about a decade ago. We're still using it today, but we're going to do a brand refresh. We're going to put some money to digital marketing. There's been very little money in Tourism Cowatchan spent on digital marketing. Most of it has been in hard copy print, and we know today in marketing that digital is extremely important. It's very important for them to have something in hard copy in their hands once they get here, but what we're trying to reach are those people that are farther away. So when they come through Duncan, or when they go through Mill Bay, it's great for them to have a map in hand. But you've got to recognize that a lot of people these days are using their phones even still, and if we want them to plan that Cowatchan is the place for them to come, we need to be digital. So a lot more attention given to the website, keeping it very dynamic. Social media and online advertising, very, very important. Our communications PR, extremely important. Our digital assets, making sure that we have those really incredible pictures that captivate and engage the tourists coming here. Events and festivals, we have an amazing number of festivals and events that go on here in the Cowatchan. So we're not going to run the festivals and events, but we're going to market them and we're going to bring them together. Publications, print advertising, signage, a lot of the signage we don't have control over, recognize it's the Ministry of Highways. And then research, so that we can come back and show people. Digital helps us do a lot of this as well, because it's easy, much easier to track than it is a hard copy print. But research so that we can come back and we can show what we're achieving, so trackable marketing. What's the request? I was trying to actually, I changed this, I was trying to think, what am I requesting from you? I have to ask you for something. It's pretty easy. Just maintain open lines of communication, communicate with us, let us know what it is you're doing here in Duncan. Work towards a common goal. Recognize that the tourist, and that was partly what I showed you at the very beginning, recognize that the tourist is somebody who comes through here, but they do support our economy in so many ways, and they do become residents. I can tell you how many people that I know that live in Cowatchan that came here as a tourist, or came here because their kids were going to Seanigan or Brentwood and now live here. And bring your tourism vision forward by engaging with us. Talk to us. Next steps that we're going to do. Stakeholder meetings will be held at, in all five local regions. We're going to share our marketing plan, encourage the tourism operators to sign on as stakeholders, even though we might be advertising and marketing them for free, you'd be amazed how difficult sometimes that is just to get people to sign up. But we need to get people to sign up and get a really strong database, and to gauge industry input. We're hoping by March 31st, I just recently had a conversation with CVRD today, with, hopefully by March 31st, we will have a service agreement in place, and we'll have the transfer of funds, because then we'll be able to start moving forward with our Destinations BC money, which will come to us in April 1st. We really want to be able to start activating that as, as soon as possible. And then we will begin with the MRDT work. And I probably was over 10 minutes, but I tried to move it along really fast. I think this is really important for us overall, what we can do with this money, in a very short period of time, from 120 to now more than doubling that, and then if we get to the MRT, we could get up to a very sizable budget, 500,000 to 600,000 in a fairly short period of time with leveraging with our stakeholders. And then we're really going to be able to make a big splash out there, so people will know what's going on in the Cowatchan Valley. Thank you very much for your time, and if you have any questions, please, please ask.
Thank you Janet. Do we have any comments or questions? Michelle?
Thanks very much for bringing this to us. We've been hearing a lot about it, and it's good to know where everything's at and how things are moving ahead, so thank you, I appreciate that, and all the work that everyone has put into it. I know that, I sit as a liaison for the Downtown Business Improvement Association, and they, they are very interested in having a seat on this committee, and I'm just wondering how you're, you're planning to connect with all of those organizations and identify to make sure none are missing.
Yeah, it's a, it's an extremely important point. So we haven't actually set the dates yet to when we're going to go out to everybody, but we will engage downtown Duncan, as well as all of the chambers, as well as special interest groups, and then we'll start setting up some meetings and further developing what we're actually doing with the committee. So really, I suppose the next step for me here, and we're moving so fast at this point, and as I said before, it's all time on volunteerism at this point, too, so we're kind of doing it off the side of our desk, but it will be to put together a really solid business plan. So in that process, we're going to go out to speak to people so that we can integrate it into the business plan, so that's what we're presenting to the CVRD. But also recognizing like all business plans, all good business plans, you do a five-year business plan, but you're always adapting them. You know, in, in my business, I don't do anything beyond actually a three-year business plan now, and I'm adapting it every six months. That's how fast things move, and we have to have that kind of position to be reactive to what's going on. Sorry, I went well beyond your question.
I have a quick question for you Janet. I've noticed with Sunfest, when they bring a big star into the area, that star then tweets out or Facebooks out, and they have millions of people following the star. Have you had a chance to combine with Sunfest yet, or talk to Sunfest about joint marketing for Vancouver Island?
You mean Tourism Cowatchan and Sunfest?
Yeah.
Not really. Sunfest is, is done, is a private festival. It's not done by CVRD or, or groups of that sort. If you're asking, are we going to try and connect with Sunfest or the other festivals? Yes, absolutely, we will. I, I'm not sure how receptive they're going to be to joining in and being part of that, but regardless, it, you know, it's, that's all a win-win situation. The one piece that we do really focus on, that we have been running, is Saver Cowatchan, which was down in Mill Bay. We actually did run that as a group of volunteers. So I don't know if you heard anything about that one, but it's, it, the intention of that festival was to be 10 days of recognizing all of the businesses in the Cowatchan Valley.
Great. Anybody else? Michelle?
I'll just make a quick comment. I'm always amazed on how much time and energy that goes into these things, and how much people dedicate. I know that you run your own business and have a family, and that you're organizing volunteers and trying to work with the CVRD, and so I just appreciate that when you have this many people, and so for you and the volunteers and everyone, the amount of time they put into the community, it's, it's appreciated.
Thank you. It's, it's an amazing community, it really is. When I think about all the things that we have going for us here, it's, there's, it just, we should be, we can be so much farther ahead than where we are right now with tourism.
Great. Thank you Janet.
You're most welcome.
Moving on, we'll go to 6.1, Report of the Chief Administrator Officer. And Peter?
Thank you, your worship. I will just touch on a couple of the, you have the report there in front of you. The Second Street Capital Project, the design has been finalized, and staff have begun creating the construction documents and the plan for communication with the area residents and property owners. Drawings are being sent for review by an engineer prior to submission of the construction application to Island Health. We also have received the nine in total proposals for the Coronation Avenue Traffic Study, ranging from 17,000 to 45,000. Review of those proposals is underway, and will be completed in the next couple of weeks, and will be awarded by staff in keeping with the purchasing policy. The study will review the pedestrian safety and options on Coronation, particularly at the Fetterman and St. Julian intersections. And I think that's probably, I'll just touch on those at the moment, and if you have any questions.
Great. Any questions?
We can ask at the end.
Okay. Moving on, reports of staff. City of Duncan receives the Canadian Award for Financial Reporting for 2014. That council received the February 15th, 2015 report by the Chief Administrator Officer, advising that the city has been awarded the Canadian Award for Financial Reporting for its annual report for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2014. Do I have a?
I'd like to move it and add congratulations and thanks to Talitha Salder, our Director of Finance.
Great, thank you. And Talitha, we have a little award for you here, if you would come up, and.
Need a second.
Oh, we need a secondary first, thank you. Any further discussion? And I also want to personally thank Talitha, because when I got elected, I asked her a whole lot of crazy questions, and she was very patient and kind with all her answers, so thank you. So if you'd come up just for a moment, thank you.
We have the city, thanks for having us.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thanks very much.
Moving on to number 8.1, Reports of Committees. February 1st, 2016 Committee of the Whole Recommendations. 8.1.1, Proposed AVICC Resolution Marijuana Sales and Distribution Tax Sharing for Local Governments. I guess I'll read these three paragraphs here. That council endorsed the following resolution and direct staff to forward it to the Association of Vancouver Island and coastal communities for consideration at its April 9th to 10th, 2016 conference, whereas the federal government plans to establish a federal conference, whereas the federal government plans to establish a federal provincial territorial task force to seek input from experts in public health, substance abuse, and law enforcement and design a new system of strict marijuana sales and distribution with federal and provincial excise taxes applied. And whereas regulation enforcement for medical marijuana retail dispensaries will likely fall to the local governments once the law changes, thus creating additional burdens on local government resources. Therefore, be it resolved that the AVICC and UBCM lobby the federal government to request that a portion of any future federal provincial tax collected through marijuana sales and distribution be shared with local governments, and that the concept of tax sharing with local governments be forwarded to the task force looking into the new system of marijuana sales and distribution for consideration."
So, second?
Any discussion out there?
No.
We'll call the question, all in favor? Pass.
All right.
Moving on to 8.1.2, Travel Expense Policy. "That council endorsed the travel expense policy as attached to the February 1, 2016 report by the Director of Finance."
So, second?
Any discussion? I'll call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
8.1.3, Totem Committee Budget. "That the budget for the totem committee for 2016 be increased from $12,490 to $20,490 to accommodate the refurbishing of a total of four totems in 2016."
So moved.
And a secondary?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. 8.1.4, Sewer Camera Purchase. "That council provide early budget approval to purchase a sewer inspection camera, up to $15,000 with funds to come from the sewer fund."
So moved.
Second?
Any further discussion? Counselor Jackson?
Yeah, I gather that the camera that we have used is old and is failing, and maybe you want to explain a little bit more, Mr. Divertai?
It's not currently functioning at all, and so it's...
Well, there you go.
Pretty tough to do much with at that moment.
Okay.
And it is ancient, actually, so...
And didn't you say there was one that's available for $10,000?
Yes, we have located one that's much less expensive than the 15 we had thought we might have to pay, so...
Yep.
Great. Any further comments? I'll call the question, all in favor? And pass, thank you. 8.2, January 21, 2016 Tourism Committee Recommendation. 8.2.1 Tourism Committee Budget. "That the Tourism Committee recommend to council that the City of Duncan enter into an agreement with the Couchin Valley Museum and Archives for the provision of the Downtown Information Center services at the Couchin Valley Museum from June 15 to September 24, 2016, with a maximum contribution of $8,700 for wages, with funds coming from the Tourism Committee's budget, and any other operating costs be subject to prior approval by the Tourism Committee, and that the City of Duncan enter into an agreement with the Couchin Valley Museum and Archives for the provision of the Totem Tour Program from June 15 to September 24, 2016, with a maximum contribution of up to $8,700 with funds to come from the Totem Tour Budget, Totem Tour Budget, and any other operating costs be subject to prior approval for the Totem Tourism Subcommittee."
So moved.
Any discussion? Counselor Jackson?
I think this is great. I think that the Information Center services at the museum last year were invaluable, and starting this year, we're going to be able to keep much better statistics about who the people are, where they came from, how many people. Because the Information Center is now way north of town, we just felt it was far better to have one in town to catch our tourists. And for them to also be running the Totem Tours is just a no-brainer. They do a wonderful service, and they did last year, and I'm expecting the same for this year.
Thank you. Any other further comments? I'll call the question, all in favor? Pass.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to 9.1, Counselors' Report. Do we have any counselors that would like to share a little bit about? Counselor Staples? And, okay. Would you like to go first?
Mine will be fairly brief. It was great to go, actually Counselor Bruce was there as well, to the Last Heart and Stroke Foundation Breakfast. 30 years was celebrated, and yeah, it will be dearly missed, I think, in the valley, so. And I'd just like to thank Colleen Marsal for all the work that she and all of her volunteers have done, because it's an incredible amount of work and a large amount of money that they've raised over the years. So, just thanks to all of them, and to getting me to dress up at 6:30 in the morning, and Mike Coleman and the few other people who dressed up there. That's always fun, too. And just that, I attended the Red Dress Event that was in the park for, to honor the murdered and missing Indigenous women on Sunday morning. And I don't know of other people from here, I know Counselor Jackson walked through, and it was, there was a beautiful ceremony in the morning, and it was a real honoring, and prayer offering for the women who've gone missing and been murdered in our community and in other communities. So, I want to just thank the people who organized that event, and all of those who came out. It's quite something to see, it's very haunting, and it really gets the point across, so. And also, just a quick Junior Counsel update. Junior Counsel is being meeting with other councils, councils from Vancouver Island. The Nanaimo Council drove down, I think it was a week, maybe two weeks ago, to introduce themselves, and tomorrow, Wednesday night, they're meeting with the Victoria Council via Skype, and they're all getting very excited, all of the young council members from the island, about coming together for a pre-conference session at the Annual Vancouver Island Conference this year, and they're having a great deal of fun, and they're learning a ton from each other about how their councils work, and what they do, and what they can do, and they've already got some pretty exceptional things planned for that event, which I am sworn to secrecy, but it will be, it'll be great. So, I just wanted to let council and everyone know what they're doing, and they're doing a great job.
Great, thanks for your report. Counselor Bell?
I'm just trying to think of what the highlights are. Community Safety Advisory Committee, we voted on a new chair, we have some new members, and there was a discussion around safety, and speed limits, and stuff in school grounds, so we're just kind of getting together our goals and what we're going to work on. Definitely a focus on safety and pedestrian safety. Disability Committee, I'm not sure what we came out of that.
Walking, we're walking tour.
Oh, right, yeah, I don't know if you want to report on that, Counselor Staples.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Jackson will report on that, but that's pretty cool, I'm nervous about that. North Couchin Parks, they, we put forward some bylaws around behaviors around the Island Saving Center. Some of the staff are having struggles with some ongoing behaviors. That will go to North Couchin Council. And we discussed the soccer fields and the usage around the soccer fields, and apparently they've been very successful. And then I was filling in for Counselor Duncan for the Island Saving Recreation Commission, and Counselor Jackson is the chair, so I don't know if you want to check in about that. That's it.
Thank you. Counselor Jackson?
Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, the Disability Committee will be doing another wheel about to draw attention to the challenges faced by the disabled community in this area. We will be inviting members from other councils, the police, maybe the school board. I'm gathering together a guest list, and that is going to be on May the 19th. We will be meeting over at Couchin Independent Living and getting lessons in how to work electric scooters, and then we're all going to take a totem tour, so that's going to be fun.
Wheelchairs? Wheelchairs?
Well, might be wheelchairs, but there's also going to be scooters. And then, just for a matter of fun, Counselor Staples and I are taking the Hulk Meanum 101 class every Tuesday night, and we can now say, "I squail, cmceea", you know, we're learning a few phrases, and it's, I don't know how I will ever learn that language.
What did you just say?
I said, "Good day, honored friends." So, it's very challenging, but it's a heck of a lot of fun, and there's a bunch of very nice people in that class. So, we've got another, what, five to go? Yeah.
Great. Thank you. We'll move on to 10.1, Bylaws. Bylaw...
We don't get to speak, as people in the box don't get to speak?
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Horgan, are you there?
Yeah, I'm afraid I haven't done much, I've been stuck in this box for two months.
You're...
But I want to thank, I would have to thank the mayor, and thank Peter for covering for me at the chamber, but that's about all I've got. It is very interesting trying to work out of here for a full meeting, so thanks very much. Now you can move on.
Thank you. Counselor Duncan?
I'll go with Horton.
Excellent. It's nice and warm and sunny here, Counselor Horgan, so you can come home soon. Bylaws, 10.1, Bylaw 3139.01, Animal Regulations in Impounding Ownerless Cats. "The council adopt animal regulations in impounding amendment by law number 3139.01, 2016, a bylaw to authorize the feeding of up to five ownerless cats, subject to certain conditions and minor housekeeping amendments." Do I have a motion?
Second.
Second, discussion? Counselor Jackson?
Yeah, this came out of our previous, we changed the animal control bylaw to say that you couldn't feed ownerless cats, and of course, there is Couchin Cat Rescue. They do have a cat should release program for feral cats, and they give them little places to stay, and they're fed, so the staff here worked very closely with them to come up with a number of exceptions, so that would include feeding stations, outdoors, shelters, and that, and the number of cats on any given property. So I believe that they're quite happy with our amendment. Thank you.
Anyone else? I'll call the question then, all in favor? Motion passed, thank you. Moving ahead to 10.2, Bylaw 3134, 2016, Financial Plan for 2016 to 2020. "That council give the first three readings to the Financial Plan Bylaw 3134, 2016, a bylaw to set the city's five-year financial plan for the period 2016 to 2020."
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor Jackson?
This is available on the website now, or do we have to wait till it takes, gets fourth reading?
No, it's on the website.
It's on the website now.
It's in the process.
Okay, thank you.
Talitha, would you like to say a few words on the, I had your name written down here on my...
The bylaw proposes a 2.98% tax increase. The impact on the average home, based on the preliminary assessment rule, the impact on the average home will be approximately $42, partially offset by a $5 decrease in the garbage fees that council has proposed for the year, also included in this Financial Plan Bylaw. Keeping the multiplier for business steady would result in a small decrease for business owners for the year because of the changes in assessment. We will review the impact of the taxes when moving the tax rate bylaw forward, probably in, at the April Committee of the Whole.
Great, thanks Talitha, and thanks for keeping us organized. Any further comments? I'll call the question, all in favor? Pass, thank you. 10.3, Bylaw 3120.01, Water Regulation Amendment. "The council give the first three readings to Water Works Regulation Amendment Bylaw number 3120.01, 2016, a bylaw to change the water restriction sprinkling times from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m., and from 8:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., to 7:00 a.m. to 9:00, and from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. And housekeeping amendments." Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Somebody can a second? Thank you. Oh, great. Any discussion? Karen, would you like to?
As council recall, back in 2015, the City of Duncan, North Couchin, Lady Smith, Lake Couchin, Couchin Tribes got, and the CVRD got together to coordinate all their water regulation bylaws, so that everybody was following on the same page. And we did a really comprehensive and coordinated advertising campaign that consisted of newspaper ads, press releases, news releases, and this door hanger that we circulated to all the ratepayers. Since then, what we did is on October 30, 2015, that same group of people got together to debrief, to see what worked, where we could approve upon, and one of the comments that seemed universally, universally happened at each jurisdiction was concerns about the time from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m. in the morning, and 8:00 to 10:00 p.m. at night. And that's primarily because we increased the period that we would be in watering restrictions from May 1 to October 30. And there was concern from some senior citizens about the dark, the darkness at those hours, et cetera. So they had asked if we would consider reverting it back to 7:00 to 9:00, both in the a.m. and the p.m. And that was universally accepted with everybody at that meeting. The other thing that I'm kind of pleased to announce is that the Couchin Bay Water District will come on board with us this time, and so their logo will be on, and they'll be participating with us. The other water districts were there as well, but they weren't necessarily able to jump on board just as of yet, but they'll try where possible to coordinate with us. And the only extradition on there is to include, at stage two, to have restrictions for washing driveways, houses, sidewalks, and parking lots, unless the person is preparing the surface for painting, or to prepare the surface for pouring of concrete. And it was felt that doing this during stage two was an unnecessary waste of water during that time period. And that's it.
Great, thanks. Anybody else? I'll call the question then, all in favor? Motion passed.
Aye.
As I turn the page over, we're number 11, Question Period. Counselor Jackson?
Yes, thank you, through you to Mr. Divertai. I note that as far as 15 Canada Avenue Development Permit, the amendment was reviewed by the Advisory Design Panel, and I noted in their minutes that they had made a number of requests and suggestions, and I just want to know, were those well received, and do you expect that to be within the new amendment?
I think they, we're anticipating some information coming back later this week from the developer. It was actually the developer, apparently at the meeting, I missed that particular one, but that had suggested that they would bring more information about the Bill Green Checklist and be able to bring their person to answer that. That's why they, essentially, that's why the second meeting of the Advisory Design Panel was, was being held, so that they could come in and answer some of those questions. Hopefully, we can get to that soon, and then we'll be able to bring whatever those modifications are, but it's hard to know what the, what changes the developer might come back with until we see those later this week.
Okay, thank you. Just one more, it's not actually a question, but I just wanted to let everybody know one more time about the Community Energy and Emissions Program, about the tap-by-tap water and energy savings kits at City Hall, that if you bring in your old showerhead, that you get a free low, what are they called? Low-flow showerhead and faucet aerators, and I think a little bit of tape or something like that, for free, just bring in your old wasteful showerhead.
Make sure you live in the city.
Pardon me?
Make sure you live in the city.
Yeah, make sure you live in the city, that's right.
Great. Anybody else have any questions, Counselor Duncan or Horgan? Okay.
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to 12.1, Adjournment. "That the February 15, 2016 council meeting be adjourned."
Tom? Second?
Great, I'll call the question, all in favor? Thank you.
Good job. Your emergency? Your eminence? Your eminence?